Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to an end. Please address for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners' meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and it is being recorded via audio and video as well. And trying to stop while I open up my webpage, it's slow. And if you're going to address the board on anything that's not already on the agenda, please, when you come to the podium, make sure you identify yourself for the record for your name and your address. And I'm going to borrow that because apparently the file is not found on mine for our meeting.
You want mine?
Mine's popping up, but no file found. We try a little time.
We have copies available. Would you like me to go get them?
Oh, wait, hold on, hold on. I think I'm in. I'm in, I'm in. Ha, okay. Any words, recognitions, or correspondence?
Now, please point out the one operating without technology is on top of things at the moment.
I have those. I'll take those and no. Approval in previous minutes from July 6th and July 19th.
I would move for approval.
Second?
Got a motion, second. I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Pumpkin foot recognition of visitors. I don't think it's not on the agenda. Here again, we'll do our agenda items. Item number one is the FSAC case. Doug, did you want to?
Okay, this is coming before the board for some discussion on what the county wants to do regarding the potential order coming out of the FSAC, the Energy Facility Siting Council, on the Nolan Hills Windpower Project. The public hearing has been closed, and so there won't be any further testimony to provide it to the council. Their next step in the process is to finalize proposed order and issue that. A lot of times they do that at their board meetings, which, council meetings, which are the next one, I think, is scheduled at the end of August. But from information we're beginning from staff from FSAC is that the proposed order will include the language that was in the draft order, which includes the conclusion that the county's setback requirements are not a substantial substantive criteria that FSAC has to follow. So the next step in the, if, when the proposed order is issued, there will be a notice sent that will include the option for requesting a contested hearing. This would be conducted by a hearings officer. Not sure the timing on it, there is anything in the rules as to how much time will be allowed before we can request a contested hearing. But I think at this point it's just to see if the county does want to think about contesting the order when it is issued, or if it wants to take any other type of stamps.
Hey, before we get into too deep a discussion, I'd like to thank Bob Walder, Doug, all the people from BMA that kind of kept this alive. We've spent a lot of time at different meetings with FSAC internally, externally, and a lot of time's been dedicated to this. I, my going to the discussion of the item, I'm very much in favor of Doug's recommendation for that we do look at assistance from outside council with the preliminary information that Bob has received. I, just in general, I think this is a high risk, and I have mentioned that before, I think it's a high-risk move, but I think that we're all up for a good fight. I don't see, it's not an easy path to victory if it is challenged, even all the way to the Supreme Court, by the way, the legislation's written, but I think it's worth a fight because I think the next step for long-term remedy to these issues is going to be a legislative fix. And I don't think we're going to get to there without taking this step first, or at least having that in our quiver. So those are my comments in general.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Doran on all fronts. It is certainly a somewhat risky step, but I think if we don't, we could as well establish a precedent, or be party to a precedent that we will not want moving forward.
I'm also on the same page. I also want to thank the Matten Alliance for the work you've done, brought that to our attention. So if you wouldn't mind expressing my thanks to the rest of your group, Richard, I'd appreciate that.
You bet.
So this is, this is certainly something that's been on the forefront, so we want to make sure that, you know, we have that two-mile setback, and I want to defend that. So I'm, I'm ready to pick up the torch and go. So, any further discussion?
I would move for approval to give authority to Doug for, to secure counsel and present direction to follow, to follow county criteria, criteria for the Nolan Hills project and provide direction back to staff. And I would add to the commissioners also on that.
So basically, authority to proceed with a contested case hearing if it comes to that point when the order is issued?
Yes. Right. As I indicated before, I had some, some conflicts in this issue, but I do not believe I have any kind of a conflict in terms of a polling county policy. So I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion on the motion? All for the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I don't know if you want any clarification that at this point you are basically contesting FSAC's decision, nothing to do with the project itself?
That's exactly what I want.
Correct. Thank you. Copy or purchase, number two.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Bob Walder, County Planning Director. So the request before you is for a replacement of our copy machine. As you know, our department processes a large volume of copies, especially when it comes to planning commission packets and board of commissioner packets for land use matters, published, publishing reports and things like that. And our, our current copy machine is just not as efficient as it used to be, frequently, you know, jams and has, has issues where we have to call maintenance. So we're looking to update that. We received two quotes, one from Cannon Solutions America for a final price of $8,650, and the other quote was from Copyers Northwest for a price of $10,234. They also included an overview of what the cost would be for copies, and Cannon Solutions of America was the better deal on all fronts. So my proposal is that you would approve the replacement of the copy machine for the $8,650 from Cannon Solutions.
Bob, is your old copier leased, or is it, do we own it and do we have a home for it?
I believe we own that one. I don't know if you know about it. I, I believe we-
My, my guess would be we own it.
Yeah.
The reason I ask, I didn't see it.
But I think there is still some life in it if it could go, I'll let the committee make that decision, but maybe it could go to a department that has less demands. But, I mean, it's, it's a nice copy machine with color capabilities and 1x17, it just isn't able to keep up with what we need it for currently.
Any further discussion? Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second?
Got a motion, a second. I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maintenance HVAC request.
Good morning, commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Unit 11 County. This first request is for the replacement of the make-up air system for the kitchen at the jail. We've been band-aiding it together since before I've been here, and it is finally to the point where the repairs are not lasting.
Can you have any kind of idea, ballpark dollar?
I'm going to speculate somewhere in the 70 to 80 grand range, is my guess, but I honestly don't know.
So in that case, you're going to put out the request for proposals and then bring the proposals back down?
Correct. Yeah, this is just to go out for bid, is what this is for.
I was just wondering, is there some kind of conspiracy against our HVAC unit request to count?
Tell me about it.
I'd move for approval.
Motion, a second. I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Why you got a whole lung this year like the new Tom Peters?
I know, we don't even have Tom on the agenda.
I know.
Somebody send him a note.
I'll call him later, don't worry about it.
Pilledon Lawn Services.
Okay, so we have been unable to fill my, my lawn mowing position at the current rate of $13 an hour because we're competing with McDonald's who's starting people out at $17 an hour. So I'm, since I haven't used any of this money yet, I have extra money involved, so it's not going to be any budget change. I'd like to bump this up to 17 to see if I can get anybody for the rest of the season.
Would there be any, you know, we hired a service to do the Hermiston ones, how's that working out?
That's good. Yeah, he's, he's keeping up with that. We're still doing weed stuff with community corrections and bushes and stuff, so it's working out really well.
So, because I'm reading the pinky, and one of the things is authorize alternatives for obtaining yard maintenance for the penalty facilities. I'm wondering if there's a service in Pendleton that would be similar to the one in Hermiston?
Uh, I can do some pricing and check and see what, what the costing difference would be. The one in Hermiston is, is literally like maybe $20 to $30 more than what it actually cost us to do it, so to me, it was, it was well worth it. I just don't know if I get that good a pricing in Pendleton, but I can check.
For $17 an hour, if you do, let me know, would you please? We pay more than twice that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's an in-house person, so, yeah.
Do you have somebody in mind at $17 an hour?
I've, I've had a couple of people that have showed interest, but not at $13 an hour, so.
I, I just have a hard time bumping this 40%.
Well, what, what would we pay, what are we paying in-house roughly for having a current staff member do it?
Uh, roughly 24, I mean, my guys roughly make 24 to 26 an hour.
Plus for what?
Plus, plus benefits, yeah.
Plus a hefty amount of benefits.
Yeah.
Plus the work that they should be doing, it's not getting counted because they're mowing the lawn.
But we're probably paying 35 or so.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to look at, with all the benefits and everything, yeah. Yeah, where the lawn mowing, the, the $17 an hour position, there's no benefits there, so it's just-
So when we're discussing the penalty facilities, we're also including like Juve and up there, is that correct?
Yeah, Pendleton would be guardian care. Well, there's not really any mowing at the courthouse, it's just weeds, but the, or the health department, I mean, the courthouse, juvenile, and then obviously we have Milton Free Water Broadway, community corrections, and the jail.
So do we haul our nomowing equipment back and forth to Milton Free Water, too?
Yeah, usually we'll just load a mower and a weed eater and a blower and a truck and go. And then we usually try and do other repairs while we're there, so it's not just going over to mow.
Well, maybe the, the answer's a hybrid, hire somebody by the hour here in Pendleton and look for a service in Milton Free Water, there's a lot of them over there, it's kind of like-
Well, there's not only a lot of services there, there's other entities that might be agreeable to doing it for us.
Exactly.
In, in an isolated situation, right?
Yep.
Like the, the buildings in Hermiston, I mean, I know how the DSD, actually we contracted with the Pendleton School District to handle all of our maintenance. Wasn't worth it for us to have a staff. So the city might be agreeable to add us to their list.
Yeah, it's just the one building, so.
The, to me, I think, and I think it's kind of been worn out by the, the public's comments, but I think the appearance of our buildings is critical.
Oh.
And it's kind of, kind of like advertising to the cow option. If you don't advertise, they'll know you're not there. And if we don't take care of our, our buildings, we get, we know it.
Absolutely.
I, I still have a hard time with $17 an hour, but as long as we, as long as we investigate other options at the same time, I mean, we're coming up on the end of the summer, so.
Yeah. If you're comfortable, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that was the motion?
Yeah.
So clarify said motion.
My mind is perfectly capable of capturing.
Don't make me read it back, Rick.
You can just read that.
Please don't make me read it back.
That's exactly-
Okay, approve the increase in rate of pay or authorize alternative for painting yard maintenance at Pendleton Facilities.
Can we include "and authorize"? Or, well, okay, yeah, nevermind.
Rate of pay.
I, I see it now.
Okay, yeah, and it sounds like you're kind of Pendleton, you went Milton Free Water and quit.
Yeah.
Yes.
And if, do you have a contact from the city that you can give me for that?
Yeah, well, John does, probably Linda's the best person.
Okay, Milton Free Water?
Yeah.
Yeah, Linda Hall, city manager, I can get your contact, though.
Perfect.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All of you on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Stay right there, Mark.
I'll stay here.
Maintenance payable electrical.
Yeah, so this is for Double S Wiring, all the new rooftop units that were installed by HMS for $6,567.58.
And that's for here?
For, yeah, here at the courthouse, yes.
I'll move for approval.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Paul is raising his hand, your chief advisor.
What's that, London?
Robert.
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert, I didn't see your hand.
Pardon the question, but since HMS quoted the deal, wouldn't, I mean, that, wouldn't that be part of replacing those units?
Electrical, asbestos, removal and all that is usually remitted in any bid like that.
Hmm, I wouldn't take it personally. That's part of the job, but I, but I, I mean, I appreciate that it isn't in this case, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, maintenance payable for air conditioning.
So you had a, was that Carrie? Did you have a phone?
I don't get, we had a motion and a second. All of you on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're on air conditioning. Okay, so this one is multiple invoices for Murphy's Heating and Air for supplying some stuff for the maintenance shop and then repairs to the Juve system to get it up and running until the main parts arrive for the, for the big repair.
And are they tooling down up there?
It's starting to creep up again because the repairs that we did are, I mean, it's really a Band-Aid to the, you know, the coil's leaking, and so it's unfortunately leaking in a spot that's not very easy to try and fix. That's why we had to order a new coil. So the new coil arrived yesterday, and I haven't talked to him today to see when he's going to schedule that to install. But this bill is for $11,275 for the total of all of these.
So are we done now? Are we caught up?
Caught up.
On, on the HVAC at the Juve and, is Murphy's done with their work?
Uh, until they install the new coil, which arrived yesterday.
The new shop's done, the-
No, those are just supplies for us that we're installing. So, yeah, that's, that's ongoing for a little bit yet, but it's, it's close.
But there are more supplies to be ordered?
There, there's going to be just a few parts and pieces as we, as we put the last pieces together.
I entertain the motion. Motion, second, I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Question, on the previous issue, did we get into the records, the question or the value of getting clarification on what installation looks like? Is that in there?
Installation of the coil?
No, the, the previous question on the electrical.
Oh, you're on that.
I went back to that and said, did the record include the comment or the question about being assured that what, what installation looks like?
This is for the rooftop units, is that correct?
Yeah, the question Robert raised.
Right, I just want to double-check I have the right contract. Is that, come on, this is the air, the rooftop units?
The HMS contract.
Okay, under that contract, well, HMS has three, four contracts.
Oh, sorry.
For the rooftop units excluded, it excluded any link side power modifications. Is that what the electrical was?
Yep, that was the electrical.
Okay.
So it was already there.
I, I agree with Robert that I think that in the future, we're looking at full service packages, full installation packages.
I, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I can have them include that. The problem is, is that, that really increases the cost more because you're bringing somebody from Portland, they never, generally never try to find somebody local. They always bring somebody that they use on a regular basis, so, but, I mean, I can, I can have them included, it's not a problem, it's just generally that's an item that's always excluded.
In a competitive bid situation, I think that they would try to find the least expensive to get the job done, right?
Yeah, because we're, we're battling that at the jail right now, where they're, they haven't been able to find a plumber locally, and so they're having to bring somebody out of Portland to-
I don't believe-
If they bid that, I mean, that's a hard bid, so.
I don't think we are characterizing it as a mandate, only a consideration.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. I think that should be the first consideration, I guess.
So I've got a question on Juve. Was, was there any discussion on a, a full new system instead of band-aiding it together?
Yeah, we're, we're going to get pricing. Kim wants to sit down and discuss replacing all the units out of her budget, and-
Her budget could support that.
And, yeah, we're, we're going to have that discussion, I believe, actually after this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is, this is to get us through.
To get us to that point, okay.
Because it's kind of like Stafford Hansel, where, you know, we have the chiller on order, but we're probably not going to see it till January, so we've got to let the system through till, till then.
Please refer back to my previous comment about our HVAC system under attack.
Yeah, I, I lost two units at the health department on Monday, so we've got one back up and one of, we've got parts, should be here today, so.
Let's get off this topic, we're sort of painting.
It's rough, stop talking to me about HVAC.
Still painting.
Uh, this is painting at the juvenile facility, this is on the, the regular preventative list for the last probably four years, and Digna called and asked if it could be moved forward for the inside part. So that's what this is, $11,281 for painting the juvenile side of the juvenile detention facility.
Is that completed?
Yes.
I would entertain the motion.
Second?
Motion, second, I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can you post?
No.
Motion carries. Maintenance chiller repair.
Yeah, this is Stafford Hansel. This was to get the system back up and running, $9,807.82.
Commissioner Doran brought up something the other day, and it was, you know, we always typically go with the lowest bid on these things, but maybe at some point it's more cost-effective to not go with the lowest bid and go, putting words in his mouth, but maybe I'm missing what it tells me, but-
Yeah, well, I'm-
It would be cheaper to go with the lowest bid after all.
I'm struggling with that right now with Guardian. The low, low bidder is, I've had nothing but grief since I started that project, so.
And is that, is that law, do we have to do that, follow the lowest bid?
Yes. Now, we can issue, we can make timing part of it if you want to, and we do in a lot of situations. And that, so it's not just price, it's also their availability, availability of a contract.
But you have to make that clear in the bid request?
Yes, right.
We did, we did that on Hill and Bridge.
What did we do on the courthouse roof? When we took the lowest bid?
Which, you mean the roofing part or the air conditioning?
Which proved to be a, no, back when we did the roofing part.
Right, yes, that was-
Which proved to be a disaster.
That was a little bit.
I think we issued the DA's office umbrellas, I think is what we picked.
Yeah, would have been nice to go with the local.
Well, you know, the public expects us to be good stewards of the, of the buildings and grounds, and we're required by law to do the contrary in terms of accessing bids.
Yeah.
Okay, this is something I wanted to throw out there.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Move for approval.
Second?
Motion, a second, I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, you're out.
Am I out?
You're out.
Thank you, commissioners.
Sheriff's Office payable.
They indicated they'd be calling.
Here's the phone number, any in 70, is that somebody from Sheriff's Office?
If not, I mean, it's- What, this is, was referred to the board for approval because of the amount. This is for additional vest for the sheriff's office, and the request is to pay 911, supply $11,904.34 for the vest.
And this is a different set of vests than what we saw?
Yes, yes, these are for the ones that were approved last meeting for, for different employees.
Move for approval.
Motion, second, I'll pay the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Emergency management.
Want me to handle it?
Yeah.
I'll see Tom on that.
I, I'm here, commissioners, by phone.
Oh, okay.
So what we're asking of you today, commissioners, is to sign a agreement with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. This is actually a revised degree- uh, office of the state fire marshal. This is actually a, uh, a revised agreement. If you recall, several months back, we came, uh, before you and asked, um, through the grant, through the homeland, I'm sorry, hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant program for, for out, to put out for an RFP or a little over twenty-six thousand dollars for a commodity flow study to be conducted. And we didn't get any takers on that RFP and so we went back to the, uh, to the office of the fire marshal and said, what else could we do? And one of the future projects that we had submitted for was for a, um, a crisis communications workshop to be conducted in the area. And, um, so the state fire marshal's office went to FEMSA, who is the, uh, the federal, uh, entity that, that handles the funding and said, um, we'll allow for reallocation to this project in lieu of applying for it again in the future. So, uh, what we're asking for today is for the Commissioners to sign the grant agreement for that project so we can proceed, uh, moving forward with, uh, the different elements that need to occur to, to make that, uh, that crisis communications workshop come into fruition.
Tom, I, um, I did include the, the LED, uh, see, minutes in the, um, application for the April meeting. What I don't have or haven't seen, you said you went to FEMSA for the approval to change this grant. Do you have an approval back yet?
Yeah, but that's actually, it was the state fire marshal's office, uh, since they're the pass-through between us and FEMSA. Um, so that, that is signed and in, in their possession and that's their approval actually, not, not specifically ours. So, uh, we are actually a sub-applicant below the fire marshal's office.
But, but my question is, has that been approved by FEMSA?
Yes.
We actually have a, a hand raised.
Yeah, and it is, uh, people, I'm with, uh, I'm the chairman for the Umatilla County Local Emergency Planning Committee and I'm, uh, one of the, uh, we're gonna be hosting this, uh, crisis communication workshop and we were working with emergency management with Tom as well as another entity to put this, uh, crisis communication workshop on in April. And I wanna thank you and I support you and I support Tom in this, uh, in endeavor as well. So if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you for the words, appreciate it.
Move for approval.
Got a motion, second, I'll fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Public health, Benson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, so what I've got before you is to get approval to pay a, the annual CLO dues, um, which are for the amount of six thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and seventy cents. Um, the dues for CLO are based on population of the county size. Um, and so we pay more than some of the smaller counties, we pay much less than some of the larger counties, but every county gets one vote. So this is an organization that helps represent local public health at the state level and with state legislature and helps provide guidance to us in a variety of areas. And we continue to be active participants and I would ask that you approve those funds and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I certainly don't have any questions and I, I think it's a highly, highly valuable partnership and, and engagement. So I make a move that we approve the dues.
I second it.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that, uh, we have you there to provide a voice of reason. So appreciate your willingness to participate. Uh, with that, uh, we have a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye.
Aye. Before you, before you go away, I'll go.
Go ahead. I, I think we ought to commend our public health department. We've made a part of them that we don't just want them, uh, as distant partners, we would like to have them in the room at appropriate times to be involved in, in critical part because we are the largest county in eastern Oregon. I think it's incumbent upon us to be present and they've made that sacrifice.
And I, not only that, they're active.
Yeah.
I do want, while, while you're still on the phone or on the camera, or on the camera phone?
Yep.
Because, um, I wanted to say thank you for how expeditiously you got out the nitrate billboards. But I don't know how you do that, but it, it was amazing. They look sharp, they're clear. I've had a lot of comments on them.
Good.
Anyway, thank you for that. That, that was a big step forward in that program.
Excellent. Happy to, happy to hear there's good feedback on it.
Okay, moving on. CDDP payable. Good morning.
I'm here before you to ask that you sign a payable to Therap. Um, it is our electronic case management system. It is for fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-eight, fifteen thousand four hundred dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, we will probably need to do this for another two or three years. However, the Office of Developmental Disabilities with the state is in process of developing a centralized case management system. So our hope is that we can transition out of the system at some time within the next three to four years.
Kim, I, I think I asked you this when we did budget reviews, like, I can't remember for sure. This maintenance contract, how many, how many operings, how many people are using it? How many people do you have on this case management program?
So we have a staff of nineteen. We have one open position, so eighteen currently within our staff. But this system actually allows us access to our provider agencies, so our residential programs. And so our staff are able to do monitoring and oversight, um, to, for our office, for our residential programs. And so that's where the actual benefit comes with this specific program. Otherwise, it's just a really expensive note-taking system, but us having access to, um, our residential programs is, is worth its weight in gold.
And then as you look at new programs, and maybe you're not that far down the road yet, but history's always seems to be extremely important and especially in your case. And, um, is it gonna be transferable to the new state program? Or is that something we need to look at early?
Um, actually, we will, the new state program is being developed, um, and it will have a provider component, but they, there are several CDPs and case management entities within the state of Oregon who are using Therap and various other programs. So as the state develops their case management system, that is being considered on how that information can get transferred. Um, at minimum, we will get, because we have gone paperless and so we are completely electronic with our physical, we, we don't have physical files anymore. Um, that will be able to be uploaded in a fairly seamless manner. There might be some initial upfront work, but it won't be as cumbersome as when we had, um, four hundred physical files in our office.
Support that, Ian?
For?
For all of her operating systems?
Yes, I believe so. Uh, I was looking for IT, I think Dan's...
Or Tim's on. Tim, do we, or Dan's on? No, he was. Tim, do we support that whole program internally?
No. Um, Therap is actually supported by our, the program is actually supported by the Therap company. We have a, a person who does technical assistance and, and helps us. We have very little to no issues with the program as far as technical problems. It is always up and running. We always have access to it.
So what about information storage? Does Therap have a, a cloud space or do we do it on our hard drives?
So we actually chose to, um, do it on our, our hard drives to make sure it's backed up. And so I worked with IT on that. And so our, our filing system with all of our, uh, historical files and everything is within the county system.
Thanks, Kim.
Move for approval?
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, foreclosure notice.
As part of the annual tax foreclosure for delinquent property taxes, uh, the county has to publish the notice in the, a newspaper of local, um, local newspaper with, uh, countywide distribution. And so the proposal is to once again have the, the notice published in the east Oregonian.
I'd move for an order number TX two zero two two dash zero three.
Second. Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Flood repair payable.
I guess I don't think... Uh, this is a payable referred to the board, uh, from finance, uh, because of the dollar amount. This is for the actual repairs that were done to help with the, uh, repair, uh, near the city of Echo with the May and June flooding. Uh, it was done by HNS Inc. out of the grand and the amount of the payable is two hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and it's before the board for approval.
And this is coming out of about four hundred thousand approved previously?
That is correct.
I have a question in that regard. The, the bills, the bills have been submitted to us by, uh, City of Echo periodically and there's been, what, five or six of them? Uh, and they come to a variety of us and, and I'm just curious if, if, if finance could just check with the City of Echo to see if what we think we're dealing with is, is a complete, you understand me, Robert?
Um, I've been corresponding with Dave in Echo for, since yesterday when I finally got invoices. Um, you may have seen him earlier. I had not seen him yet. Um, and I can confirm with him that this is all that they have, but, but I believe this is all that they have right now. I'm certain there'll probably be additional things.
I, I, my only question is because it's coming to a group of us and we're all getting these bills, I don't wanna see them fall through the cracks or there be an expectation we're gonna pay one we haven't dealt with. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'll confirm with him before I...
That's an extremely good point, Commissioner Murdoch, because yesterday I asked Dave to consolidate all of them and get them to Robert because Robert and I had a conversation and he had only had a minimal amount of them. I...
I, I think maybe, yeah, maybe communicating with the City of Echo, it'd be useful if they deal directly with finance and not just with a, a multiple of individuals.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's where we are now, finally. Maybe. Yes.
Is that where we are?
Um, I, I certainly will discuss with Dave that, make sure I have everything he knows of. Um, I'm somewhat concerned there may be some loose ends, but I'll find that out.
Well, there's another one on our agenda, Anderson and Perry, and that...
Related.
That's related, so.
But I've seen more than that.
And then there's, there's also some bills from the Soil and Water Conservation District. Uh, they don't, aren't large enough to come to the board meeting at this point. But again, I, I'm concerned that there may be other vendors involved. Uh, I have no way of knowing what they might be.
Appears I'm not the only one concerned.
Okay. Speaking of Anderson Perry, I think that's our next one.
You can vote on the last one.
Okay. Uh, so, did we have, we had a motion for approval, didn't we?
Yeah.
A second. So I'll fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not concerned about...
So did Commissioner Murdoch make the motion?
At the thought of the project, I'm only concerned about...
The administrative motion.
Getting our arms around this.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
I'm actually pretty sure we voted on it, too.
Okay, so quick and quiet. Okay.
Are we on Anderson Perry?
We are on Anderson Perry.
Okay, we're gonna go here.
And this is from the same project. This is for the engineering component of it. It's for seven thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents to Anderson Perry.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, I'll fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We voted on it. All right. Okay, uh, we have reached the end of our, uh, actual business items. Uh, any comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Doran?
I have none today.
You don't wanna talk about what's coming up next week?
Well, I think that everybody's heard it so many times that I don't care between the radios and the TVs and, and every, every event I go to, this would be the, probably the, you would tell a county fair, don't miss it. And I don't leave it at that. Everybody else has heard it.
Richard had to comment before we go on.
No.
I apologize. I missed the public comment period. And can we bring that back up or not?
Uh, definitely we don't go into that, but I, I will grant you about two minutes.
Okay, it's really quick.
Okay.
Richard Jolly, uh, five four four six two, Upper Dry Creek Road, western Oregon. And I was curious as you brought any of this, uh, there's, first of all, I'd like to commend the county for doing its due diligence in the EFSEC decision. And I real, it's not about Nolan Hills, it's about all our counties and stuff like that. So thank you very much, all of you.
We agree a hundred percent.
Okay. So, and I was wondering if that was ever brought to the, um, Association of Oregon Counties? Have they been made aware of what's going on there? Do you know?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge, because there hasn't been anything until we get, until we get the, the, uh, the findings back, then, then, there has been calls on who in AOC would be the lead on legislative decision. Those have been made.
Okay. So that's all I have on EFSEC. So the fire map came out and there's been more people that got the letters. And there's, there's already, uh, had, they've had, uh, the Department of Forestry, Oregon Department of Forestry had meetings on it and they've had to be canceled. I didn't know if you were aware of that because of the pushback on this. And the maps, there, there's the criteria for the decisions, how they did the mapping and stuff is not readily available at this time. And it is like a disaster and it's raising the insurance rates right now.
We, we are, uh, on, on top of that. In fact, I know that the state legislators, our, our local state legislators are really hammering on it. Representative Levy's one of them. I'm literally looking at an email right now. It says, Representative, Senator Finley and Representative Owens call on the Oregon Department of Forestry to immediately know about harmful wildfire risk map. So at this point, our state legislators are taking up the fight on that and we will, we will do what we can to support them.
You bet. And I would suggest that you guys take a look at what's going on here for the betterment of our county because even in the, within the cities themselves who have fire departments and all of this, it's not the same, they're using the same, uh, wording as in California when our fire danger is a lot less than California with their brush and, and, uh, twelve months out of the year. We're very limited out in the wheat fields and everything and the, the maps, even where I'm living, my neighbors separate from, uh, where I'm at. And then there's calling it a urban interface if there's two or three structures very close together.
Yeah, it's called a WUI, Wildland Urban Interface.
Yeah, and it's, it's all very bizarre and I appreciate you guys for...
I'm, I'm, I'm well aware of this one and, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm talking with our state legislators on this one as well, um, 'cause I agree, I got the letter and I live in town, so.
It's, it's strange. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Commissioner Murdock, you have anything to say?
Yeah.
Uh, county fairs at six, or the kickoff parade is at six o'clock this Saturday in Hermiston, so I encourage everybody to attend. I mean, you can see myself and Commissioner Doran. All right, with that...
I just wanted to make sure Commissioner Doran elaborate a little on the fair so I can use it in my OP.
If you get me started, we'll be here.
If you simply, no, I don't need it. If you raise the subject, I can take it from here.
Yes, I'm excited. It's, uh, it's gonna be one heck of a show, that's for sure.
Yeah, it'll be a few degrees cooler than historically, too, so I'm hoping...
Probably eighteen degrees. If it's at, at a hundred even, it'll be... Probably eighteen degrees. If it's at a hundred even, it'll be eighteen degrees cooler than last year.
Yeah, that'll be nice. All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.